Relative to the proposed, I think it is proposed.
Proposed Hawthorne Mall Tax Increment Finance District. Roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Marport?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Did you get me?
Yep.
Oh. Okay, I'm here. I can't hear with this mask on, I guess. Okay. So we've called the meeting to order. Opening statements from the village manager, Mark Fleschauer, and then Jim Ferrolo, our attorney.
Okay, I've talked to Mark. He's asked me to make the opening statement. We have convened the public hearing relative to the villagers' proposal to establish a tax increment financing district to be known as the Hawthorne Mall Tax Increment Financing District. In accordance with the TIFF Act under Illinois statutes, the village has taken multiple steps to get to this point. I want to go through the steps we've taken and the dates we've taken them for your information. On March 17, 2020, the village board approved by motion the preparation of an eligibility report and TIFF plan. On April 24, 2020, and May 8, 2020, the village published the TIFF Interested Parties Registry Notice in the Daily Herald. On July 21, 2020, the village board announced the availability of the eligibility report and TIFF plan at a village board meeting. On July 21, 2020, the board also approved ordinance 2020-087, calling for a joint review board meeting and a public hearing relative to the proposed approval of the redevelopment project area and the TIFF plan in relation thereto. On July 24, 2020, the village mailed a copy of ordinance 2020-87, the eligibility report, and the TIFF plan, along with a notice of the joint review board meeting and a notice of the public hearing to all taxing districts by certified mail through the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. On July 21, 2020, the village also mailed notice relative to the availability of the eligibility report and TIFF plan to all residential addresses within 750 feet of the boundaries of the proposed TIFF area and to all parties who registered on the village's TIFF Interested Parties Registry. On August 20 and August 27 of 2020, we conducted a joint review board, two joint review board meetings, one continued meeting. The joint review board is a body made up of all of the taxing bodies that are represented within the TIFF district. On September 16 and September 18 of 2020, the village published notice of this public hearing, excuse me, in the Daily Herald. On September 21 of 2020, the village mailed notice pursuant to statute of this public hearing to each taxpayer of record within the redevelopment project area by certified mail, return receipt requested, and by first-class U.S. mail to each person on the village's TIFF Interested Parties Registry. In addition, in the event the taxes for the last preceding year relative to a particular property were not paid, the notice was sent via certified mail, return receipt requested, to any persons or entities listed on the tax rolls as owners of the property within the TIFF district within the preceding three-year period. Pursuant to the TIFF Act, the village must wait at least 14 days from the closure of this public hearing before introducing or taking action on the ordinances that will establish the Hawthorne Mall Tax Increment Financing District. Said ordinances are currently scheduled for adoption at the November 3, 2020, village board meeting. At the October 20, 2020, meeting, which is the next meeting, the village will consider an ordinance approving certain technical changes to the proposed redevelopment plan and project to make a simple change to the budget to add taxing bodies' capital costs as a possible expenditure under the TIFF budget. With that, I'm going to pass the floor over to Robert Richlicky of Kane McKenna. Bob will present an overview of the proposed Hawthorne Mall TIFF district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. We've assisted the village staff and village attorney over the last several months on the timetable that Mr. Ferrolo described. And our presentation today for the public hearing is going to cover four main points. We're going to give a little bit of an overview of the plan and project. Secondly, show how that fits into village planning and overall fiscal matters. We'll go over a little bit in brief detail how the district qualifies under Illinois law and also some of the key features of the actual TIFF plan itself. As you all know, you know, the state of retail within the United States over the last several years, and this is even before the COVID pandemic, has been challenging. In particular, enclosed retail malls, the vintage similar to Hawthorne, general merchandise retail nationwide in terms of competition from online sources, has been brutal as it relates to ongoing occupancy and the condition of malls, in particular, the enclosed malls. This, the TIFF plan, supplements the village's other planning efforts as it relates to comprehensive plan and redevelopment for that commercial corridor, but it offers another tool, and that is the ability to use tax increment financing in conjunction with the village planning tools. Today, we're only going to talk about the actual envelope itself, the comprehensive plan. Over the next several months, the village would engage with the owner as it relates to redevelopment efforts and possibly a redevelopment agreement. That is not the focus of the overall plan today in the public hearing. Really, the focus is on the TIFF plan itself and the envelope that it offers as it relates to the ability to use tax increment financing. Again, the idea of the plan is general, but it's also focused, it's only going to look at the area in question, and TIFF monies can be spent within that area. That's why it's important to identify the boundaries. The idea is that these properties, which primarily include the inline mall, the former Carson, and the former Sears, and three outlaw parcels in the south corner, it excludes Macy's and J.C. Penney's. Again, it really focuses upon properties that are controlled by the current owner. So in order to comply with the TIFF Act, it's important that we hit several checks and boxes off. The area is greater than an acre and a half. It conforms to your village comprehensive plan, and that was recently amended to allow for new mixed uses. We meet as a standard, a criteria for a conservation area, and also we make the finding that but for, that but for the utilization of the TIFF, it's not expected that the area would develop according to village vision or to meet market standards. It's also important to note that over this period of time, the TIFF is in place for 23 years. That's the maximum. It's allowed under Illinois law. To the extent that redevelopment objectives are met earlier, the village has the opportunity or the discretion in order to make the TIFF a shorter time period. But again, that really depends on the finances and economics. That's fancy. So again, from the standpoint of the redevelopment plan, there are certain objectives. They dovetail with the other objectives that are in the village's comp plan and economic development efforts. And the idea is, again, to counter some of the market forces that have led to obsolescence of the facility, that have led to some of the ongoing vacancies, and bring it back to productive use. The mall has, for a long time, been a key taxpayer and employer for the village of Vernon Hills, and its size and visibility, it really lends itself to a program like TIFF where you're going to try to coordinate development, put your oar in the water, as well as the owner, in order to bring the property back to productive reuse. And in this case, we're talking about some new uses potentially. As, again, given the state of the retail market, the idea is what other mixed uses could be there that would be conformant with the market and also boost up the tax base once again. The TIFF designation is critical, as I said earlier, to that. In order to qualify under the Act, we have to make the findings that the area qualifies. And in this case, a key finding, you could go fork in a road, either a blighted improved area or a conservation area. In this case, because of the age of the structures, as I said, the vintage, you know, this mall is one of the first enclosed malls. There was a wave of them in the 70s and 80s. Hawthorne was one. So five out of the six structures are over 35 years old in age, so that allows us to the first threshold. You have to have 50% or more of the buildings are 35 years old. Here we have 83%. Next, there's 13 factors that are listed in the TIFF Act. Minimum of three are required, and they have to be distributed throughout the area. Here we identified five. There's excessive vacancies. That one is on its face, you know, due to the vacancy of the anchors and also some of the inline vacancies, obsolescence that has to do with the single-use design, the functional and economic obsolescence of the anchor spaces, and also ongoing possible obsolescence as it relates to some of the inline stores, because many of their lease requirements are tied to the operation of the large anchor spaces. This is what's called a cotenancy requirement. Deterioration was present. This was mainly in the site improvements, parking lot drives, although in some minor cases in some of the structures. Inadequate utilities, again, this was identified in conjunction with the village staff, and lack of community planning. Again, this has more to do with when the facilities were originally designed and the planning associated with that and some of the need for change that's going to come about as the properties reposition, in terms of things like internal circulation, different uses, and some of the other requirements that are going to be triggered by different uses within the area. So again, the factors are present, and the, basically, you have it as a conservation area, again, given the threshold of age.
Can you provide just a couple examples of the inadequate utilities?
Yeah, we could, again. Can you give me a minute?
Yep.
It's in the plan. We identified these with Dave Brown, and they were water mains, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. And primarily, you know, these were all designed, the lines were put in place for the configuration of the buildings that you have now. As those buildings go away, different buildings come up, that internal circulation system is going to have to be redesigned, not only from location, but also from capacity, internal capacity, where you're going to have...
So like the water lines?
Right, right.
ESFR was not a thing in 1972.
It wasn't.
ESFR is now the standard for fire protection, which...
Exactly, and same thing with detention and with stormwater detention. That's it, exactly. When the asset was originally designed, there were certain standards. As long as it progressed as is, the standards, let's say, weren't, you know, you didn't hit a tripwire in terms of deficiencies, but we're past that now. In order to reposition the asset, that's going to require different configurations and different densities and different uses.
Got it.
That was the main thing, and it also, some of the other utilities, electric and gas lines, same difference. They're going to have to be repositioned, maybe reconfigured in order to hold the new, to serve the new uses. And some roadway stuff, too.
Okay.
The TIFF plan itself, many pages long, but some of the highlights there, we talk about proposed land uses, and that's commercial, retail, and residential or mixed use. That is what the vision is in the comp plan, and that's kind of dovetailing with what we see as the market in this case. The TIFF budget is estimated at $85 million. I just want to bring to your attention, that's over a 23-year period. It's not all expected to be spent immediately. In fact, and the village board will review how that amount would be spent. The base EAV, or what's called the frozen EAV, is based on 2019, and that's $33,527 and some change. That's the amount that the taxing districts would continue to levy their tax rate on. Anything over that comes to the benefit of the village's TIFF fund, similar to your other TIFFs. The projected EAV...
Can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
Is the EAV year by statute that it's 2019?
Yes. According to statute, and Mr. Ferrolo could jump in, you have to use the certified EAV as of the date of the ordinance adoption. So if you adopt in November of this year, 2019 is the certified EAV. You wouldn't have the 2020 EAV until tax bills go out next year, which is somewhere March or April. So, yeah, that's by statute.
Yeah. Was the 2018 EAV higher or lower?
I believe it was a little lower.
A little lower?
Yeah.
Does anyone care to offer a guess what the 2020 EAV would be?
I could not at this point.
Because there's a number of vacancies there.
That's correct.
So therefore, it just, as long as the ownership applies for it, they'd have a significant reduction. So I'm assuming that probably didn't kick in until the 2020 EAV?
That would be correct, and I have received notices of objection to tax assessments from Macy's, J.C. Penney's, most recently, and several other owners. Well, those two...
And Centennial.
And Centennial, but Macy's and Penny's came in as well, and they're not owned by Centennial, so that will have an impact.
So in theory, this is a positive EAV.
Positive for the schools. It's very good that we're...
And that's how I would look at it as well. Like I said, it's been creeping up even with the vacancy. It's been creeping up a little bit, you know, the high tide raises all ships or whatever that saying is.
When is the certification? May, month of the year?
For this, in this case, that EAV's already been, the 2019's already been certified.
Yeah, but when was that?
That's usually when the first tax bills go out.
So, May 1st?
Right, around that time, May, I said April, yeah, around that time. That's when it's certified. It's usually a week or two before the tax, first installment tax bills go out.
Thank you.
Sure.
The projected EAV, again, is based upon reuse, that there'd be new construction. You know, the improvements that are there, which are significant, have been in play for a long period of time, as it relates to the age of the improvements, and this estimate is based, again, upon newer uses and, in many cases, replacement of what's there now.
And that $100 to $120 million is an apples-to-apples versus the $33 million?
Yes.
Not three times like you find with retail valuation versus the EAV.
We took a best guess. We did roll up the sleeves a little bit to put in what we thought, based on some of the presentations to the board about different uses there, trended it out at a conservative growth rate, about 2% a year, and that's how we arrived at that. And the variances between maybe one use not occurring versus another use occurring, that's the $20 million differential. This is the proposed budget. It's in the TIFF plan. Again, it's an overarching budget for the whole period of the TIFF. You do have the ability to shift line items or dollars between line items. Again, as we understand it, you know, the proposals for this TIFF would be pay-as-you-go, more performance-oriented. Items of note, there's rehabilitation included there for both, you know, mainly the online mall space. There's also some of the infrastructure utility improvement dollars are included. And last but not least, Mr. Ferrolo identified, there's, as part of the TIFF program, there's an allowance for tuition costs for both the high school and for the grade school. There's also a provision for the library payments, and these are tied to the residential development only, not the commercial. So there's a formula under the TIFF Act in which dollars are allocated every year for the schools. In this case, there's, in addition to students, also ability for taxing district capital costs for each one of, for both of the school districts, to allow them to hopefully maximize some of the benefit that the TIFF Act allows.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's...
You were finishing up with his question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The professional service costs, is that reimbursable to us at some point in time?
Yeah, it depends on how we write the redevelopment agreement. If we write the redevelopment agreement such that all of our costs, our professional service costs, will be reimbursed, then yes.
And that's all our cost, the $5 million?
Well, no, that's just an, that's an outside number. You know, we, I don't think it's going to get anything close to that. These budgets are set up where...
Right.
You set a higher number, and you can't exceed the number.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's definitely higher than what we're going to agree to.
Yeah, that's, that's not...
It's not all our, it's not all our services, Mayor.
No, go ahead.
So again, this is, as Jim indicated, this is an upper limit. It's in play. You have flexibility to shift between the line items, but it's really an indicator to the other taxing districts, too, and that's why it's an important part of the plan, what the village thinks might be needed. Over that 23-year period, doesn't mean you're going to use every dollar, it's just an outside amount. I want to be real clear on that.
And the other point I want to make, Mr. Mayor, is that the developer will seek reimbursement for professional service costs as well, for their legal costs, surveying, engineering, architectural, that's all reimbursable under the Act and will be negotiated under the redevelopment agreement.
Yeah, which is what we just did with Melody Farms.
Exactly. And again, it has to come to the board. Anything as it relates to that budget has to be approved by the board.
Yeah.
Can I ask about the land acquisition costs, the first one that was listed?
Yeah, that's, again, some of these, the idea was to put costs in because you don't want to go back and amend it. If you don't have certain line items, the TIFF Act, I don't want to speak for Mr. Ferrolo, TIFF Act requires you to amend the plan again, so it's better to be more complete. You know, certain properties were acquired by the developer, including both the Carsons and the Sears. It's not clear whether they might seek reimbursements for some of that or whether they'd be eligible, but the idea is that you would have it in your plan. Again, doesn't mean you're going to spend it. If you don't have whatever, the $15 million for land acquisition, you could shift that down to utilities or to rehabilitation or other capital costs. But again, it's more of being a completist.
Sure.
That's why we had job training in there, too.
Okay. You're throwing everything out there. I get that. So who decides whether or not the land acquisition is reimbursable?
The board and your support staff. You make the call, as they used to say.
And as far as negotiating the TIFF incentive, which this public hearing isn't about, but the developer, when we get to a number that is that gap number, the developer will have to support that number with TIFF eligible expenses. And part of the TIFF eligible expenses, I fully expect to be at land acquisition costs that were, land purchased in anticipation of the redevelopment, and we passed, I don't know if you recall, an inducement resolution back in probably January, which covered expenditures made on the mall so far, expenditures made by the village for consulting services, expenditures such as land acquisition in the event that there is a, you know, redevelopment agreement reached that causes the redevelopment of properties that were acquired. So we may get a request from the developer to reimburse for land that they purchased, i.e. the Carson's property and Sears property, as part of this overall development to meet, to meet that gap that they're seeking to meet. So that will come before you. I anticipate it will be part of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
So again, at this point, that concludes our review of the plan. Again, it's more of a high-level summary, but the TIFF plan really is more of a financing plan. The village overall entitlement procedures as it relates to planning, zoning, that continues to stay in play. The TIFF kind of moves concurrent with it or side by side as you get ready to make approvals for development projects. The TIFF assists you in terms of the financing options. It's not a replacement for your other planning or entitlements that you would continue to exercise and would come before the board. So again, at today's hearing, it's just a hearing, no action on those ordinances relating to that TIFF plan would be considered, and thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Can I ask you about, I don't know if it's page two or three, Mike, if you can go back where it had the map?
Oh. He said that there's a, oh, there is a way to get back.
So I'm not sure what point is, is the, what point there's a legal document, but in terms of the map itself, as I brought up to Mr. Fleschauer, Mr. Ferrolo before, the map that you showed us wasn't complete. Here we are. Because it's missing the movie theater on here, the grayed-out area.
Right. I think from the standpoint of the boundaries, we did exclude, we did exclude, but there was a map change, but...
You're talking about Macy's and Penny's?
And Penny's are gone.
They're both excluded.
They're both, they're both gone.
They're excluded on this map.
Yeah.
But the AMC...
The AMC theater is not in, it's not grayed out, it's not...
Okay.
It's not shown, so I just want you to make sure that before we finalize anything, that you show the actual building that's physically there.
And that's part of the TIFF. That is part of the TIFF.
Yeah, no.
And it's on... It is, if you look at the map.
It's not on there. I can see from here that it's not on there. You're missing, you're missing a part of the gray, too.
Oh, I see, yeah. In terms, you're saying where the dotted line wraps around it?
No, Bob, it looks like, it looks like this particular map doesn't have the bump out of the theater building.
The theater is, the theater actually goes right here. They need to fix that.
So we need to fix it.
Right.
It should be in the legal description. Check it.
Okay.
It's definitely in the legal... It is in the legal description. If you, if you look up there, you'll see it goes from Town Line Road up along Milwaukee all the way to Ring Road, which certainly, and then over west to the Penny's property.
Got it.
Which certainly takes in the AMC and the parking lot.
But for future reference, if someone was looking at this years later, they'd look at and say, oh, the movie theater wasn't part of the TIFF.
Point taken. Okay.
I don't know. Can we have an explanation of the type of TIFF that this is that we're expected to enter into as opposed to the Melody Farms TIFF that we entered into?
Well, again, I think you're asking about the redevelopment agreement, and that's not, that's not what this is about tonight, but I can tell you this, generally speaking, this redevelopment agreement with this developer will be a pay-as-you-go TIFF district, which means the incentive once agreed upon will only be paid if TIFF increment is generated by the development versus Melody Farms, which was an upfront payment with repayment through increment. So it's a pay-as-you-go, in other words, pay-for-performance-type TIFF district.
So just a point of clarification, Melody Farms, we went out and bought $23 million worth of bonds that we're retiring over the course of the 23-year period, or hopefully sooner. And this, there will be no requirement for the village to obligate itself. There will be no requirement for the village to acquire bonds. This increment will be paid to the developer only if the development occurs and from the increment that is generated from what they in fact construct.
That's all correct.
Yes.
So this, to say the least, could languish for a long time. You know, as far as when they complete everything, you know?
Yeah, but I think it's to their primary interest because they are, in fact...
Right.
...acquiring financing, and they wish to have the shortest duration.
Oh, I'm sure they do, you know?
Yeah.
It's a...
So I don't expect it to languish.
Okay, maybe it'll languish three years. Okay, go ahead. All right. Is there any public...
Well, the next, the next item on the agenda is just a report from the joint review board.
Oh, okay.
So I'll give that, and then public input is the very next thing. The joint review board is composed of representatives from all nine local taxing bodies that would be affected by the creation of the TIFF district, plus one member of the community. There were two meetings of the joint review board. The first one was August 13, 2020, which was an in-person meeting here at the village hall. That meeting was subsequently continued to August 27, 2020, and that meeting was a Zoom meeting. In addition to the presentation made by Kane McKenna, there were opportunities at both meetings for members of the public to comment and ask questions. At the conclusion of the August 27 meeting, there was a motion made by one of the joint review board members to recommend approval of the TIFF redevelopment project to the Vernon Hills Village Board. That motion was approved by a vote of seven to two in favor of approving, with one member abstaining. The final recommendation was signed by the chairman of the joint review board on September 9 and forwarded to the village board. Now it's time for the public input.
Okay.
Anybody wishing to speak?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Well, we have the superintendent. No, we'd like to have the superintendent first.
Oh.
All right.
Okay. And that's another lady.
Good evening.
Could you take your mask down?
Of course, it's hard to...
Only if you're comfortable. I am not comfortable, especially after what recently happened with... I am not comfortable, especially after what recently happened with, in the Rose Garden.
All right, if you can get exceedingly close to the mic.
Okay.
For those that are hearing impaired.
We don't have the hand mic?
No, because other people have handled it.
Yeah.
All right. Before I begin.
Can you state your name for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wes Poland. I'm the Board Vice President for Hawthorne District Seventy-three. Would you like my address too, for the record?
No.
Okay. So before I begin, Board President Robin Cleek regrets that she could not be here. Robin is a court-appointed special advocate and she is at a CASA training seminar this evening. That's why I am representing the board. The Hawthorne Board of Education is required by a statutory oath to respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets and to advocate on behalf of the students and our community's school to advance the vision of District Seventy-three. Our board takes this statutory oath seriously and we are committed to meeting these obligations. The local property tax is by far the district's largest source of revenue and we will always carefully examine anything that might impair the tax base or cause tax rates to rise in a way that the district does not control. And that's what we have done with the proposed TIF district at the Hawthorne Mall. The district is subject to the tax cap, which means access to any commercial new property EAV is highly valuable and allows for the tax burden to be spread away from residential taxpayers. With TIF districts, access to new property EAV is delayed for up to twenty-three years, which is equal to almost three generations of our students. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce we have reached a mutually satisfactory agreement with the village on the proposed TIF district and we look forward to finalizing the IGA. Over the next twenty-three years, we will be closely watching how the TIF unfolds and look for opportunities for the village to declare surplus beyond what's required in the IGA, remove parcels from the TIF district for early access to new property EAV, and possibly end the TIF district earlier than twenty-three years. We hope that the tax increment financing does not become the village's default tool for economic development in other areas of Vernon Hills, as that will erode the district's tax base and raise tax rates for all taxpayers. District Seventy-three appreciates its partnership with the Village of Vernon Hills. We believe we have a strong agreement that supports the economic development of the village while providing the necessary resources to educate our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is it superintendent? Yeah, come back. Wait a second, this is.
Hi, my name is Pete Hannigan. I'm the Superintendent of Schools for Hawthorne District Seventy-three. As you know, over the last year and a half or so, the village has been communicating with the school district with respect to the redevelopment plan with Hawthorne Mall and the possibility of creating a TIF district. On August twenty-seventh, the district did vote against the TIF, largely in part due to the fact that we had unresolved concerns regarding the development and we were also in negotiations with the village and the developer. Since then, all of our concerns have been resolved. We've come to a mutual agreement and we are looking forward to the development of the IGA. We are rooting for the success of Centennial or the mall redevelopment and we're looking for great things to come with respect to the village. We're looking forward to continuing, continuing to work collaboratively with the village for years to come. So we just want to thank you for all of your support and cooperation during this process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Chris. You want to state your name for the record, please?
Chris Meyer, Cherry Valley Road, Vernon Hills.
I need to really boost the volume so the folks at home can hear you.
Okay. I shopped start at Hawthorne Mall starting in nineteen seventy-three because it was the only retail in Vernon Hills. Since then, as with most people, now my shopping is in and out. Macy's, occasionally Penny's, and Mario Tricosi and the theater. What data do the developers have to show that even with this redevelopment and the TIF district, to, that Hawthorne Mall would be viable again? Because I hate to see it go downhill. Would they be back here in three to five years asking for more concessions to change, change it again? And have they given the village an example of a property like Hawthorne Mall, which has been redeveloped by them and is thriving? Thank you.
Bob, I'm not sure if you have any data from the, from the developer on that. I can tell you, ma'am, that this developer is putting a lot of money into this redevelopment. We're looking at a potentially two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar redevelopment. So they are putting their, their money out there and I think they wouldn't do that if they didn't believe in what they were presenting. It's an exciting project. I think it's going to do a great deal for the community. Bob may have some more particulars, but this developer is definitely going to put together a first-class development.
And I was going to add, you know, there's any number of properties probably around the country. We certainly got, you know, the Northbrook Court redevelopment and multi-use development going on right now.
That's great.
And, you know, and it's similar in nature to this, but I don't know if it's the TIF.
It is, it has some similarities. You also have to look at Yorktown, where they, if you go to the north part of Yorktown, used to be parking lots, you now see residential. They ring residential apartments, ring it. And you're going to see more entertainment-based uses. And again, the proof will be in the pudding. Ultimately, Centennial will have to show us letters of intent for retail or other users. We're going to have to see market studies and financing components for the residential. But right now, based on what's happened across the street and down the road, you know, the market for residential looks to be, you know, still strong. And as the mayor indicated, other places have done similar, not exactly the same. I would, you know, bring your attention to Yorktown, where they basically reinvented the north part of the mall.
Okay. Any other public comments?
My name is Brian Reichenbach. I live here in Vernon Hills. I was mostly interested in making sure the schools were taken care of. So if the school board and the superintendent are satisfied with that, I'm satisfied as well. I do have concerns that were raised, things like why AMC is included, what, why are we preferring the mall as opposed to other properties? There's a lot of vacancies around Vernon Hills. Is this going to exacerbate those vacancies? The gentleman just mentioned Lombard. I actually used to live in Lombard up to two years ago. And in August two thousand seventeen, Lombard Weston filing bankruptcy to struggle, to restructure two-hundred-and-forty-six-million-dollar debt. This was one of their prized Yorktown developments and they ran into some trouble a few years after that. So I just continue to be critical of and think carefully about this mechanism to make sure we don't get placed into a difficult situation. I'm concerned about congestion. Melody Farms seems like a very congested place already. If we're adding this to that, is that a problem? And again, the biggest issue for me is including residential properties in this development that would put additional burden on the schools. So I trust that the arrangement that has been made has been put in writing. It sounded to me like what they just said was that the money, the expenditures in the TIF are flexible. So I guess I'm concerned that if things get tight for the developer, is the school going to lose out? So I don't know if there's some specifics about the school arrangement that could be provided.
Without getting into specifics, I can tell you this, the IGA that we're working on will be approved at a public meeting by the school board and by the village board. So it will be an enforceable agreement.
Okay.
That's not subject to change.
Very good. So those are my concerns. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mark, can you address how many students are coming from Catwood or whatever it's?
I believe the current number is seven, six or seven, but I believe the current number is seven. And that's three years after occupancy.
Yeah, for two-hundred-and-sixty units.
Correct.
And there are seventy-three or is it all just?
That's seventy-three and there are zero and one-twenty-eight.
Good evening, gentlemen. From Pearl Orchard, Street Seventy, Danbury Drive. Thank you again for taking the time. I know this was required by law, but still appreciate the efforts you're making to bring everything to light and to give us an opportunity to hear some more, ask questions. Talk louder or take this off?
Whichever you prefer.
I can be loud.
Please do.
That's appreciated.
We've, we've had some complaints.
Obnoxious sometimes too, but not today. That's the goal. So I came here today with just a short list of things I wanted to hear as a member of the public. And it's not just for us, but I think it's also for all of you as the trustees who will vote to approve the TIF. So some of the things that I just wanted to walk through isn't necessarily for me to hear the answers for or for the rest of us, but for you to make sure you know the answer to it before you make a decision. So with that being said, let me just double back to what I've heard and what I've heard since from other members in the community. First off, just to build on the comments about D seventy-three and the support in the intergovernmental agreement. Excellent. Very happy to hear that. I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago that if you're looking at public information, based off the JRB, there was an alignment with D seventy-three in Lake County. Sounds like we've made great inroads with D seventy-three. My question is, this intergovernmental agreement, will it be approved prior to you voting on the TIF? So.
Not necessarily. Could be. We're going to work with the school board to be sure we get the wording right and work, and it depends on the meeting schedules, very frankly, of the school board and the village board. It is not a linchpin. We have a letter of intent that we've exchanged with one another to define the terms. We, I think we're on a very basis where we know we have an agreement. So if the question relates to whether or not we're going to hide the ball or change the terms, that's not going to happen. We're working quickly to get this done, but it's not a linchpin that that IGA gets set up or approved before the TIF will try to, and it's being worked on as well.
That's, that's good to hear. That's just, we talk about timing and sequencing. I know it's fourteen to ninety days from now when you guys have the clock for the TIF, obviously schedules. But just to understand order of events and knowing that'll be public information will be good to know. This is a pay-as-you-go TIF. I know there was some explanation from the gentleman from Kane and McKenna. If there could be any more explanation of what that means or if you guys fully understand what that means as pay-as-you-go, then even just your replay for the public would be helpful because it is different than existing TIFs. So that's just something that comes across to me as, we've talked a little bit about Melody Farm and the purchase of bonds and the use of bonds, and this is different. That might just help us understand and move away from some of the assumptions of a TIF means this when it doesn't always mean it's done this way.
Probably the easiest way to explain it, because math is not my strong suit, is, and believe me, not only are TIFs difficult to understand, when you put a TIF on top of Illinois's unbelievably insane property tax system, it's, it's so hard to explain. But basically what it means is there's no village money at risk, no taxpayer money at risk, to get paid back for the things that are built and bought. It will all come out of the rise in the increment, is the rise from what the buildings are worth now to what they're worth next year and the year after and the year after. And all monies that get spent will come out of that money, not out of any existing money or anybody's existing bank accounts. So that's the difference in a pay-as-you-go as opposed to Melody Farms, which was an upfront bond of over twenty million.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's helpful.
I think maybe just to add on that, every January, and I believe it's January, we abate, sometime in the first quarter of the year, we abate the property tax. We're required by law to collect the property tax for the village to retire bonds and also to support pensions. However, we're able to do that without levying a property tax. So we abate that. However, with the bonds that were issued for Melody Farms, there was the requirement that we establish a property tax to pay off those bonds. However, the increment there is paying off. So therefore, we are allowed to abate that property tax every year, just like the other bonds that we have outstanding for earlier projects, a number of construction projects, et cetera, et cetera. With that being said, the mayor and the team that put together the Melody Farms put in a poison pill for the folks at Melody Farms to ensure that they built it quickly and got it up. That's where the mayor kind of talked about languish. In other words, an extended construction period.
Yeah.
Where Melody Farms, it was a very, very tight construction schedule because they needed to get that increment going for their own financing and it benefited us because now we knew that there was revenue, a revenue stream coming in because those buildings were put up. At this juncture, the onus is on the developer, Centennial, to in fact make sure that they get things constructed quickly because of their own internal financing. We don't have any concerns about us having to cover financing like we did with Melody Farms.
Thank you. That, that is very helpful.
Well, in to add to that, on Melody Farms, we have an agreement where if they were to default, you know, just somehow, some way, we actually have an agreement where they got to pay us twenty-five million dollars. And part of that reason is because they're a publicly traded company. So it's about, it's.
It's got the right levers in place.
Okay, it's a good guarantee.
Yeah, agreed.
You know, which, you know, the other TIF at forty-five and twenty-one, that was on the job training. You know, I mean, that was, that was the first one we did, you know? And there was, you know, things we learned from that to not repeat, you know, any mistake we made. Even though now it's thriving and, you know, the money's flowing and the bonds are being taken care of.
We abated the property tax for those bonds this past year, as we plan to do every year.
We love to hear that as residents, don't we? So you bring up.
Since we don't tax you, you know, the municipality.
Yeah. But related to that, the, the idea of the reimbursement, that Centennial as the developer would essentially be submitting the receipts. It costs this much for us to do this phase. I thought I heard, but I'd like to just make sure we all understand that it's the board that will approve any submitted reimbursements. Is that the structure?
There's going to be a redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement is going to be the document that governs repayment of the incentive. There will be an incentive that's ultimately agreed upon, which is not finalized as of yet. As I said, this will be a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar development. The incentive that will ultimately be agreed upon will be one that's on par with a TIF incentive for a development of this size and that meets the gap in financing that the developer had to prove up to our financial people. In other words, a developer who needs TIF incentive has, comes to us and says, "Without the incentive, I cannot achieve a reasonable rate of return in the investment industry." We look at the numbers and there's a negotiation that, that goes on. We reach the number, let's say that's X. X gets repaid over time, over the life of the TIF district. Pay-as-you-go, meaning it doesn't get paid until increment is generated. So you're not going to see increment to start to get generated, probably until year, at least the second year after the first building is built. The, the amount of incentive has to be based upon TIF-eligible expenses. Under the TIF Act, TIF-eligible expenses are defined as site preparation. I mean, I'm going to summarize this for you. It's a very long act. Site preparation costs, you know, costs to get, to put in infrastructure in the ground, land acquisition cost, professional services cost. There's, there's a whole slew of costs that they can submit as part of the redevelopment agreement for reimbursement. So once we agree on that document, which, which they're lengthy, we'll have, we'll have a governing document. Then, then the way they go, they start to develop. And as, as the expenditures are made and they finish their, they finish the development and increment is generated, they will have already given us backup for all of the TIF-eligible costs that make up the incentive. So it's, it's not a line. it, we, we won't be approving that every time.
Okay.
We're gonna approve that, or not, not we, the village board is gonna approve the TIF incentive and all of the eligible costs as part of that redevelopment agreement-
Okay.
-one time.
So as long as it meets the criteria that's defined in the document, there's no additional review necessarily that says they have to take a vote every year?
No.
It's, it's, it's determined upfront?
Yes, exactly.
All right. Very, very helpful.
With, with backup. There'll, there'll be backup. That's provided.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, the 23-year clock, does that start for all parcels at the beginning of the approval of the TIF, or does it require them to take action on the parcel for that 23-year period to start? Does that make sense how I'm asking?
It's all parcels. This entire TIF you see on the map-
Uh-huh.
We get 23 years-
Got it.
-for that boundary.
Okay.
It's not by parcel. It's 23 years from the time that the TIF is set up, which if, if things go on schedule and if the village board approves the TIF ordinances in November, uh, it'll be 23 years from, uh, sometime toward the end of this year.
All right. Uh, one more question. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the boundary lines and the particular part in the southern part of the boundary that cuts into State Route 60. Um, it bumps up against the, you know, the parkway of the other side of the properties. The, the intent of that unique carve-out, particularly in my high-level understanding that it's State Route 60, which is, you know, we may invest into it, but it's not necessi-, it's a, it's, it's not just the village of Vernon Hills' liability to make improvements on that space. I'm happy to hear somebody who's more knowledgeable to explain that, but that just stands out in a interesting, I mean, it has an interesting shape to it, but why of all of the perimeter of where we have road have we identified that region or the developer has? Um, and what that, what that could mean, so...
I think Mr. Rich, look, you probably can best answer that question for us.
Okay.
Actually, that carve-out is a carve-out because it's in the other TIF.
Bob, could you come up to the mics?
Sure.
That carve-out is a carve-out because it's in the other TIF across the street. That TIF included part of the roadway and we can't overlap them, so that's in a TIF already.
Is that the Melody Farms?
The other TIF.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
We can't double dip.
Because Melody Farms made all the improvements that gave you heartburn over the past two or three summers, going back when we reconfigured the intersection of 60 and 21.
Okay.
So the part that's grayed out on 60 now might potentially need improvements, so that's why that's, that part is included.
Kind of rounding it out, essentially, so...
So we're...
Uh, one other related question then, because we mentioned the phrase adjacent TIFs. Is there any way that TIF dollars here, or TIF dollars in an adjacent TIF can be transferred across TIFs within the same municipality, or are they self-contained?
Yes, it can't-
They can be transferred?
Money can be ported from one TIF to another-
Okay.
-in the event, um, there's a need to do that. Uh, the intent is not to do that. The intent is to have, uh, the Melody, I'm sorry, the Hawthorne Mall TIF support the incentive that we're, we're discussing, um, with the developer, but statutorily, there is the right to port, it's called port money from, from TIFs.
So, in the land of hypotheticals, because today is today, not tomorrow, that also could mean in a situation where Melody or Hawthorne is thriving extraordinarily and the EAV is through the roof and the TIFs rising up, that you could use one to help settle the other? Potentially, I guess is, I'm just being very optimistic, like-
Hypothetically, I suppose-
Yeah, the land of hypotheticals, I know attorneys love those, right?
I suppose, I suppose it could mean that, but, but I can tell you this, that the Melody Farms TIF is doing very well-
Yeah.
-and, uh, they're, they're on schedule to make, they've made all the bond payments, probably on schedule to defuse those bonds early, so things are looking, you know, very, you know, very positive there. Uh, Hawthorne Mall, it's, you know, we're, we're an idea right now, hopefully.
Yeah.
I, I, but I don't, I don't see the need for Hawthorne Mall money to go across, across the way, and at this point in time, it has not been discussed-
Okay.
-to bring Melody Farms money into the Hawthorne TIF.
But it is, but just knowing on record, it, it's a possibility that when you bump them up, that you, you have the ability to do so. That's just, that's just good to know, uh, one way or the other. So, gentlemen, I'm gonna leave it at that, because I feel like I'm not the only member of the community that might have questions, but again, I wanna thank you for transparency. Again, I know it's obligated, but you're still making the right efforts. I'm very happy to hear that you've been working with D-73, looking forward to seeing more about that intergovernmental agreement, so you guys can make the decision on behalf of the residents. So, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
There's other people. Chris.
Good evening, Michael Shank, 587 Central Park. Um, it's great news to hear that you guys came to an agreement with the district. I know you guys are all for the schools, and I wanna thank each and every one of you. I talked, I was able to talk to most of you guys during this process, and, uh, it's just good news. You know, it was years ago when I came up here and I was reminded by the village manager about conversation I had during a public speaking about, it was, it was a good moment, I think, in my opinion, because it really started to propel, uh, my passion to advocate for the schools, and I really have enjoyed the partnership with the village, the park district, and the schools over these last few years. I really think that you guys have really shown your support more than many times over. So I thank you all for that. I thank the school board, District 73, for really putting forth the effort and staying at the table and trying to figure it out. So, again, as a resident, I thank you. Um, I do have a couple of questions about the TIF. I think Carl actually got to most of them. Um, but I do have one question about what he was talking about crossing over on the TIFs to pay. It, my opinion is, it sounds like Melody Farms, based on where their EAVs are now, how it's exploded and hope, hopefully it just keeps going up. It looks like 78 years that could potentially be paid off. Does that kinda look-
I, I'm not, I don't have access to the finances.
Sure.
Uh, maybe Mark?
It, it's-
Looked at those today. It, it's not seven or eight years, but it certainly is a lot shorter than it's projected to be.
Because we're only, you're paying back the 23 million, correct? Or they're, the 23 million is what the TIF is for-
Roughly.
-Melody Farms, right? Okay. So I, you know, my opinion is like, re- retire that one as soon as possible so the taxing bodies can reap the benefits of that, you know, is my opinion on that.
Yeah.
Versus helping to pay them all, keep them separate.
I'd love to never have to talk about a TIF again.
Yeah, sure, right? Right?
I mean, in reality, you know, I mean, we didn't have these kind of burdens, you know, going back probably 10 years ago, you know? I mean, nobody had their hand up. And then things went in the tank in 2008 and the world changed.
Which kinda ans- goes my-
Before you-
Sorry.
I just wanna throw one more, and everybody keeps talking transparency, so let's throw a little more gas under the fire here. There's a third TIF in town. Let's not forget that. It's at, um, Milwaukee and 45. It's paying its way, as of today.
Yeah.
It's paying its way, but that may be another locale that might benefit from-
The crossover?
Yeah.
Well, it, it's not contiguous to the others. That, that's the problem.
It has to be connected?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
And I stand corrected.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's unfortunate. So, they, so the developer's a very big develop, very large developer, a lot of assets. My question is, do they need that full 80, I, you have the budget for 85 million, I know that that's the cap. Do they truly, have they proven that they need that? You know, money is cheaper to borrow today than it was a year ago, a couple of years ago. I don't know what their internal financing is looking like, but it's a question that I might would wanna ask the developer. I said, "Look, what is your financing looking like last year versus this year?" Because if you're looking just at 1% savings, or they're, I don't know what their financing, that could be tens of millions of dollars that could not have to be part of the TIF, and let them kind of float that a little bit more, in my opinion.
This is just the budget.
The, we're correct. I know that's the cap budget.
It's, it's not gonna totally come to fruition.
Okay, so, that's fine. And then the other, last question, um, what if they sell in 10 years and they've only gone maybe through pha-, what are there, three phases in this? Maybe they're mid-phase two and they decide to sell. You know, it might be a better play for them to sell because what, whatever the market bears, what happens to the TIF? And being as a pay-as-you-go, does it end with them, or does it continue on to-
If, if they sell, they will have the right to assign their rights in the redevelopment agreement to the purchaser. They will be able to monetize, because that will have value, obviously.
Yeah.
So the, the next owner of the mall will be able to benefit from the RDA, just as this new owner benefits from a sales tax sharing agreement that the prior owner entered into in order to build the AMC. So the, the, these types of contracts are assignable upon sale.
Does the village have the right to buy out the remaining part of the TIF to the new purchaser?
I'm not sure why we would be interested in doing that.
I, I just, it all depends what the numbers shake out, that's all.
Yeah, it's just, um, you know, I've been do-, I've never seen a village take that kinda step. Um, probably would be something that the public sector would not want to get involved in, um, but I guess we'd have to look at heart at the numbers to, you're, you're saying terminate it early?
Find a way to terminate it early where, have to benefit all parties, but it can't be terminated early with some kind of, like, offset.
Yeah, anything's negotiable. Anything's negotiable, and it just depends on the numbers at the time, I think.
So if they go 10 years and let's say half the TIF has been kinda, the increments pay back half the TIF in 10 years, the remaining TIF, if they don't further develop, right, how does the pay-as-you-go portion of it work then? Because there, if, if the new buyer said, "You know what? We're not developing anymore. We have different plans. Phase two is, whatever they've finished is finished." So the increment from the base to where they finished the work, what happens now for the next eight, what, 13 years? Are they still taking the increment, or does the increment, because there's no pay-as-you-go, they're not investing any more capital into improvements, they've just invested into the purchase? How does that work?
The structure of this, this deal, when it's completed, it, it'll be a three-phase development, and there'll be certain incentive available per phase. If phase one is finished, the developer will be entitled to earn the incentive that phase one generates. If they don't get to phase two or three, they won't be able to earn any of that incentive. So I, I, I hope that answers your question.
Well, it's, it's kinda like if, if they sell it and the new buyers decide not to continue with phase three, for example. So they only done two phases.
Yeah.
Does, does the new purchase and the new buyer of the mall, new owner of the mall, by not re-in, by not investing into phase three as planned for the TIF, does that mean the TIF is over at that point?
Yeah, the, we, we have dates by which the phases will have to be completed.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be completed, you know, when the RPA's analyzed.
So they're tied to that.
And if the schedule's not met, that will be a default, which would terminate the right to get an incentive. I'm just like the mayor mentioned.
Does it default, I'm sorry?
With the pay-as-you-go part of it, i- if they're not going anywhere, there's nothing to be paid.
If they're not putting capital into the improvement-
Correct.
-then there's no pay-as-you-go, that's my point. So now the TIF is, now the increment is still the increment of what it is, because the, your base is already established, but what happens now, they know that they're not gonna put, they say they missed the phase three date, the new owners. So that's it, it's defaulted, and now it goes back to all the levying bodies then?
So, yeah. Does the whole thing default, or just the two phases?
The TIF doesn't necessarily terminate, if that's your question. Does the TIF terminate? Uh, that's, the answer's no. We'd have to consider that as a possibility, but, you know, your, your question has so many prongs to it in terms of, of, you know, hypotheticals,
Yeah, right, I know.
and what's happening relative to each phase-
I know.
-that it's very hard to answer. I could tell you this, with pay-as-you-go, the risk is on the developer.
Right.
They have to finish to get increment for each phase. If, and also, in addition to the risk being on them, we will put in hard dates to finish a phase. So even, it, it's, it, when we say pay-as-you-go, that doesn't mean you can build it at any time over the course of 23 years. You know, you're gonna have, they're gonna have to build it by a date certain in order to achieve, you know, the, the incentive.
Yeah, knowing, knowing the hard dates is good, but also knowing that, you know, if, I'm just concerned, if they sell, you know, how does that help, is it gonna help us, is it gonna, as a village, is it gonna help us or is it gonna hurt us potentially in the long run, especially if the new developer or owner does not, not wanna put another shovel in the ground? And if this TIF is still out there and the increment is still being received to match whatever, you know, it's, there's a lot.
But each phase is gonna be sized up based on-
Okay.
-what each phase generates increment-wise. You know, if they sell to another mall owner, I, I, I think it's gonna be within the interest of a new mall owner-
To continue.
-continue on with the progress of the development. Um, that's just market forces driving that.
Okay, thank you. I, I should just, I urge you guys, ask about their financing, how they're financing this deal this year versus last year, because I think it might paint a better picture of, do they really need all this, and, all this, all this money from the TIF? I understand it's just a budget, you know, and you guys have, as I said, you are out, you have the, um, the obligation, I think, to kinda, you don't have to give them, you don't have to authorize that, correct?
If, if I could make a point on the budget you saw?
Yeah.
Uh, if you looked at that 85 million and you look at those categories-
Yeah.
-one of the categories was-
With schools.
-schools, libraries-
15 million.
-capital costs for taxing, that's 15 million.
Yeah.
That's 85 down to 70.
Yeah.
I, I could tell you this, the developer incentive won't be 70. You, you know, it, it won't be 85. It's, it's gonna be something less than that-
Yeah.
-um, that, that meets the gap that they need. Our financial consultant, Kane McKenna, uh, has looked at their numbers very, very closely. We continue to do that. Uh, the interest here is not to over-incentivize, but to, to create an incentive that creates a market-based rate of return so that this development can occur and benefit the whole community.
Yeah.
And that's what we're working to do.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Melody Farms is, you know, competition and diversity between Melody Farms and the mall, I think is gonna make this whole corridor thrive. Too much competition, you're gonna knock one out of the other a little bit, but is what it is, so. All right, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
You know, in, in, in addendum today, I didn't, I, I'm, I think in the Melody Farm, uh, TIF agreement, there was a, a provision regarding when, when they could sell, and that was, I think, a, a five-year period?
After completion, five, yeah, sometimes there are-
Yeah.
-milestones put in.
Yeah, so it, that's something that we will also add, you know? Uh, it, again, all these, all three of these TIFs are different, okay? And, and, uh, 45 and 21, you know, we kinda got held up by, uh, you know, one of the builders there, you know, and that, they kinda ran out of money, and, and we didn't have the agreement we have now with Melody Farms, so. But it is built out and, and it is generating the revenue to, uh, you know, retire the bonds. But, uh, this, yeah, this one's totally different. We're not putting, you know, bonding out for this developer in any way, shape, or form, and, uh, you know, that's kind of important, you know, and, because we got a triple, AAA bond rating still, right?
Uh, I'm not sure the bond rating, I assume, I assume it's-
We still do, and it, and that's very good for, for the village if we ever have to borrow money, and I think, you know, I don't know what the interest rates are now, but, uh, y- you know, it could be, it can be very, very lucrative to us in a positive way, because, you know, we've re, uh, you know, redone some of the bond agreements that , you know, we've entered into when they had significant savings, as interest, you know, moves the needle around. So, uh, yeah, anyway, in that kinda wood, we're still in good shape financially, and this one, this one won't impact it. Hopefully it's good for everybody else, you know, and, uh, yeah, so we'll go forward, and I got a board meeting to start, but anybody else? Yeah.
Martha Scott, I've been a resident in Vernon Hills for 15 years. Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is the third agreement, TIF agreement that we've gone into.
Yeah.
It seems like you have learned more each time and have gotten much better. Um, I certainly like the fact that the schools are getting back. I like the fact that the TIF money is a pay-as-you-go, um, versus the Melody Farms where it was all paid upfront. Do we know what the rental level is at Melody Farms and also the apartments that are adjacent to the Hawth-, to the Hawthorne Mall?
Residential or commercial?
The residential.
Residential, I believe, is in the high 90s, and as of last week, uh, Melody Farms or Regency announced that the mall itself is 100% occupied.
Okay.
And the Milton?
Excuse me?
Uh, that I don't know, uh, because I haven't been tracking that one.
Last time we checked, though, that was well into the 90s, also.
My worry is, is that it's an additional, it's not condos paying taxes, they're rentals, again, you know, will there be-
Rental property does pay taxes, in fact, they pay a pretty-
Well, they, yeah, they do, the resident, yeah, okay. But will there be enough, will that, like, subtract from what's already there? But will there be enough, will that like subtract from what's already there?
No, actually, it'll add to it because residential is taxed at a much higher rate per...
No, I'm talking about the rentals as far as, you know, like if they're going to be occupied.
He's asking about the occupancy rate.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll take away from one or the other.
According to what Milanofi, who is one of our gurus, and he has, on a number of occasions, predicted stuff two, three years in advance that happened. He said, "This is, this is the way of the 21st century mall, and there are more people now out there looking for these kind of apartments," as I think the at-worth at Melody Farms proves it. I mean, look at how quickly that went from digging a shovel to 90%, you know, full.
Well, they also didn't stay, I mean, they stayed on schedule, but they also started before they were supposed to start. They were working on Saturdays. They didn't agree, they didn't stay within the agreement of the hours that they were supposed to work. And my other concern is, is the roads and the infrastructure of like getting around. It's already very hard to get down 60 at prime times.
But that's not a result of what we've got here.
No, but...
That's a result of people whose homes are being built west of here trying to get to the toll road and coming home from...
Well, with the Melody Farms?
Right.
That would be my only concern. And then I'm glad the other gentleman mentioned the Yorktown Mall because that's what I had seen that, and I don't know what their TIF agreement was, but I understood that the Yorktown Mall, the developer went bankrupt and then it left the village with quite a large debt.
Not us, not in this.
All right, well, it sounds like you guys are talking about us, so thank you.
Yeah.
So that kind of answers my questions.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Just one more quick question, also in line with the housing.
Is there anything in the TIF Act if it's included in a, if housing...
Can you stick up into the microphone?
Sorry. If housing is included in a TIF district, is there anything in the TIF Act or will the village set aside a certain portion to be affordable housing? Or has the developer agreed to have a certain portion as affordable housing? Because we all know the prices in Vernon Hills keep going up and up and up.
The TIF Act does not have that specific requirement.
Okay. Will the village consider that with the agreement with the developer?
I don't think that's going to happen in this case.
Not in this case, but we've had other people have approached us about other properties, and we always bring that up.
Yeah, we've done, well, obviously, we've done affordable housing in the form of the Victory Center.
Right.
Which, you know, has turned out to be, I think, a real good project for seniors.
Right.
Since I can relate.
I'm not thinking necessarily seniors, I mean, young people.
Well, okay, yeah. Well, I mean, we're not adverse to doing it because we've done it and, you know, but we'll, you know, that'd be a future project, you know, but not in this instance here.
Not in this?
No.
Would the developer consider it?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, anybody else want to speak to this one? Okay. All right, we need, do we need, we don't...
We have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll share.
Roger, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Before we close here to everyone. First, I want to thank everyone for coming up and expressing your interest and comments. I know Michael Shank's been involved for a long time here and his input, he's been talking to us probably the last three months, giving us his input. The D, same with the District 73 Board. But this is really what I want to say, you know, from my vantage point, being here, you know, as a trustee, you're in very good hands with the people that you have working behind the scenes. Yes, we're the trustees, but believe me, Jim Ferola with Kleinthorpe, you know, these guys are phenomenal. They're the best. These are municipal law specialists. They're new, we brought them in last year, one of the best decisions we've ever done. His firm has a whole bench full of specialists. Jim has been great at negotiating, great at talking with D-73 as the superintendent and Robin Klick would attest to, and their new lawyer as well. Our accounting firm, you know, much to your chagrin, you know, Jim, yes, we outsource it, but I'll tell you what, they're a municipal specialist too. We got a municipal accountants running, helping to run our village. You know, one of, you know, they run, you know, they help run Glenview, Grace Lake. So again, you know, just know, you're in good hands here relative to who is actually running this village. Mike Atkinson, you know, Mark Fleischauer, these guys have been great. They, you know, they spearheaded, you know, the discussions with D-73, as Robin and the superintendent would attest to. And quite honestly, we, you know, our main objective here was to make sure we had support from D-73 before we approved and moved on with this. So, you know, thank you. Because, you know, Mark, between you and Jim, great job. Because I think, you know, they did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, you know, here in getting, you know, the village and the D-73 on the same page. And of course, you know, Roger, he's had a lot of experience, everyone, okay? This guy knows how to run a village. It's not easy. It's like running a business. And if you don't understand the business, you can't run a business. I know some of you run businesses out there, but that's what this is, okay? No one can just walk off the street and go sit in his seat and be like, "Oh, let's run Vernon Hills." No way. You saw Forbes, you know, we're listed in one of the top places to live in the country.
27.
And you know what? Our demographics, yes, they're not Lombard's demographics. That's why this development's going to be extremely successful in the surrounding areas, you know, from the north and the south, you know, relative to where we're at. That's why people want to come here, okay? And, you know, even during this pandemic, you know, we've done very well. Yes, we have a lot of hardware stores, but I'll tell you what, their business is up significantly. The grocery stores, we got a lot of choices there too. Guess what? Their business is up significantly, which is helping to sustain this village because that's what villages run on, sales tax dollars. So, you know what? I just want to say thank you to the staff and everyone that has got us here, and I just want to let everyone know, you're in very, very good hands. Forget the trustees, it's this staff who runs this village. They're the ones that you can be comfortable and sleep at night, that, you know, they're doing and making the right decisions. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? And, oh, I'm sorry, Tam Cook.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm glad that we finally got the District 73 agreement that you guys can live with too, because as I've said from the very start, the thing I'm proudest of in the years that I've served on this board, the top thing was that we built our own high school. Nothing was better for improving a sense of community than having our own high school. And so as long as I'm on this board, I don't care what we're building in town, schools will always come first. As most people know, I've spent almost 35 years at Hawthorne. So, and the only reason I haven't taught this year yet is because we're not doing any in-person learning. But it's just, we will always take care of our schools here. When we built Greg's Landing, we got a multimillion-dollar check from Greg Zale upfront. And that had, I can't tell you how many other communities around here said, "How'd you guys do that?"
We asked.
I know. And well, we asked...
We kind of told them.
We asked in pretty strong terms. But we, I promise you, we will take care of the park district and the library and the fire department, because we have to, because that's what the community's all about.
Yeah, well, you know, and case in point, you know, the new kindergarten building, you know, we certainly participated in that, and it's built on some of the land that we donated. Just as the library, that whole site up there was about eight or nine acres. And, you know, you got the library, you got the Victory Center, and now, you know, the kindergarten. And that's pretty good too, because, I mean, you had, you know, at least three different governmental bodies.